School Board Business Meeting for Wednesday, June 21st, 2023 to order. Can I get a motion to go into closed session, please?
I move that we go into executive closed session.
They moved and?
Yes, I am waiting for them to.
Move that the members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711. I'm sorry, was there something, Jack?
I was just checking to see how many members were here.
Oh, okay. The Virginia Freedom of Information Act is amended for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board of the City of Norfolk pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A1 of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the session are the discussion of personnel on today's regular personnel agenda and the ongoing discussion of the annual evaluation of the performance of the superintendent and the setting of superintendent's goals for the coming contract year, July 1st to June 30th, as required by Virginia Code Sections 22.1-60.1 and 22.1-23-253.13:5 related guidelines of the school board of education, guidelines of the Virginia Board of Education, and the related provisions of the superintendent's contract. Discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A2 of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the session are the discussion of students on today's regular student support agenda and discussion of students recommended for the NPS School Board Scholarship to attend Old Dominion University. See discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and the terms and scope of such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A29 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the closed session is whether to renew the Valverde Consulting Group's contract to authorize them to continue to provide training to the board after the current contract term ends on July 1, 2023, or to put the contract out to procurement again with potentially new terms and scope pursuant to Virginia's procurement laws and the board's procurement policy. Decounseultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where a discussion in open session would adversely affect the school board's negotiating or litigating posture and consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring a provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsections 2.2-3711A7 and 8 of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the session are those set out above in subsections A through C of this motion. Bassin.
Aye.
Buffalo.
Aye.
Clanton.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
And Martin.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Welcome, everyone, to the June 28th, 2023 business meeting. We're going to go ahead and get started. All right, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin.
Here.
Buffalo.
Here.
Campson.
Here.
Clanton.
Present.
Jordan.
Here.
And Martin.
Present. Okay, now I have to get my agenda out. Tanner, did you give me an updated agenda?
It was right on the top of your stack when you first came in here. There we go. Not that one. It was on.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. Let's see. Okay, next we have item 3.03, the Pledge of Allegiance by our Norfolk Public School alumna- alumnus. Ms. Nyam.
Good evening. We request that all cell phones and pagers to be turned off or vibrate during the course of this meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, can I get a motion to adopt our business agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner.
Bassin.
Aye.
Buffalo.
Aye.
Campson.
Aye.
Clanton.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Up next, we have our school board clerk's report. Ms. Tanner, whenever you're ready, go ahead and start.
Yes, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent Dr. Burdson, board members, and our viewers and people here on tonight. Today is the last school board meeting for our two school board representatives. Let's give them a round of applause. And also, congratulations to Jordan Wicker, who was selected as salutatorian for Lake Taylor High School. Great job. I want to give Nyah and Jordan an opportunity, real quick, to share with us what's planned next in their life's journey.
Good idea. Jordan, would you like to go first?
Sure. As of right now, I will be going to Radford University to study in special education and obtain both my bachelor's and master's in five years with a minor in leadership and American Sign Language.
Did you say Akron?
Hmm? Radford.
Radford.
Radford, okay. I was like.
She signed a contract with Norfolk Public Schools already. That's not getting you, Mr. Phillips.
I would like to teach in a hospital, so.
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Keep us posted.
All right, it's my turn. So I will be going to Brown University this fall, where I am planning on majoring in international and public affairs and minoring in theater. And I also would just like to take the time to say thank you to the board and Norfolk Administration for helping me with this coveted role. It has been a wonderful learning experience these past few months, and I have gained so much insight, not only into how things work behind the scenes with Norfolk Administration, but also just understanding, you know, what is it that makes students, you know, come to NPS every day and how things work behind the scenes. It's been a wonderful, wonderful experience, and I just want to take the time to say thank you to everyone on the board and Dr. Burdson for helping me. Appreciate it.
That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tanner. Up next, we have our superintendent's report.
Good evening, Chair Martin, Vice Chair Buffalo, members of the board, administration, and members of our community. We have a special treat for you this evening. We have a year-end review video that we'd like to share with you this evening. It highlights all of the outcomes and actions, I should say some, not all, aligned with our strategic plan. And if I can remind you of the goals associated with our strategic plan, certainly we have workforce, student excellence, which is number one, of course, resources, community, and safety and security. So you will see some things within the video that are highlighted around that. Also, the video begins with a memoriam for all of the staff members that we lost this school year. So without further ado, please share the video.[563.12]
That concludes my video report. And I'd also like to, once again, thank our teachers, our building principals, our administrators, and staff, and most importantly, our magnificent students for a wonderful, wonderful school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bertson. Okay, up next we have citizens' comments on agenda items only. Ms. Tanner, please read the protocol.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two speakers for this evening. Today's speakers have signed up for public comments before the start of today's business meeting. If you would like to provide public comments for the agenda items only, you are required to state the agenda items you are addressing prior to providing your public comments at this meeting. When your name is called, please come forward to the speaker's podium, state your name, and whether you have a child or nor for public schools, or if you are employed by the district, and state your agenda items. One person is to speak at a time. If you are representing a group, state the group's name. You may ask your group members to stand in place to be recognized. Speaking time is limited to three minutes. A timer is set with an alarm that will signify the end of your speaking time. State your position and give facts and other relevant data. Avoid saying anything that identifies students or personnel information about individual employees. Personnel, disciplinary, and confidential matters may be addressed to the school board directly via email at schoolboard@mpsk12.com. Comments should be addressed to the board and not addressed to an individual member. School board members do not respond to public comments at the time they are given. Any written statements or supporting materials should be given to the clerk. And Dr. Martin, our first speaker for today is Rakita Robinson, followed by Elise McMath.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Rakita Robinson? I'm sorry. Okay, so Rakita Robinson is going to move to non-agenda items, so we need Elise McMath to come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Elise McMath. I'm not a parent or employed by MPS. I work for New Virginia Majority, and I'm a public education community organizer, so I get to talk with MPS parents and students as part of my job. So I was looking over Agenda Item 5.3 with the titles, specifically the Title III. I felt like it was worth remarking on because my background is in ESL. I worked as a secondary high school ESL teacher in Chesterfield County Public Schools with a very high demographic of English learners. Additionally, I worked primarily with newcomer Ls at a school that was majority Hispanic. And so I was reading over the Title III funding. It seems like the funding is going primarily to an ESL specialist and some programs to track English learner progress. A few things that stood out to me, particularly in Section F, under Programs and Services for Ls and their families. And this kind of goes off of conversations I've been having with students, particularly at Norview High School, which is very analogous to the high school that I was working at, that houses the Newcomer Academy. One student told me that the only English language support that she's receiving is one standalone ESL class, and in my experience, that is very hard to fathom. She said it's up to me to basically be learning English on my own, which is really sad. At the school that I worked at, I was a collaborative ESL teacher, so in addition to these kind of elective classes where there's just newcomers all alone, learning like introductory exploratory kind of topics of English, I was like in SOL classes there to make sure that students were able to understand the content. And just based on what it sounds like she was saying to me is there's no support like that in her classes, which is just very hard to comprehend because I felt like at my school, we weren't doing enough. But if that is the only support that's being provided to students in high school, that seems kind of... Anyways, so it says here, "Middle and high school Ls at lower proficiency levels receive greater numbers of minutes by means of standalone ESL courses." I feel like it's worth saying that that does not sound like enough, especially when you look at the dropout rate at Norview High School for English learners. I think it's around like 50% or something. I don't have that exact number. But I'm also looking at one section. It says, "Areas of strength and opportunities for improvement will be identified and shared with division leaders and stakeholders." There's also talks about like surveys, and I was wondering, will the response rate to these surveys be made public? Because a lot of parents say that they don't feel like they're, you know, being communicated these things to them. Additionally...
Your time's up.
Oh, okay. Sorry. All right. Thank you.
That concludes our speakers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can I get a motion? Sorry. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Madam Chair, move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Campson.
Dr. Martin, I have one, just one comment.
Sure.
I'm supportive of the items on the consent agenda. I just want to reinforce comments I made at the work session regarding our title plans and as we move forward in the upcoming years with our title plans, that we try to monitor and give more focus to ensure alignment with our SMART goals for our strategic plan, the SMART requirements that our schools have under the Comprehensive Improvement Plan, in addition to the supplemental resources that Title I provides. I'm going to vote in support, but I do think there's work that we can do as a board to make sure that we're establishing clear goals that then can filter down through our applications and our budget. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I support that request and feel the same way.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Basine. Ms. Tanner, please call the role.
Basine?
Sorry.
Aye. Buffalo?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, the consent agenda passes. Up next, we have our decision discussion agenda with the monthly financial report by Mr. Jenkins. Good evening.
Yes, good morning. Good evening. Chairwoman Martin, Dr. Bertson, members of Vice, excuse me, Vice Chair Buffalo, and members of the board. Tonight, we'll talk to you about the financial report for the month of May. The May report covers 11 months, almost a full year, for the fiscal year that began July 1st. As with previous reports, it reflects the activity between July of 22, and May of '23, just this past month. And these are for entries that were recorded on or before June 9th. General fund collections during the 11 months totaled $336.2 million, which is 87.7% of our budget. Collections for the same period in the previous two years ranged between 85.6% and 87.5%. On page three of the highlights, there is a graph of revenue and also spending for the current fiscal year. At the end of May, we had spent or encumbered $316.5 million, or 83% of our budget. For the, again, you see revenue of $336.2 million as, or through the month of May. For the two previous years, spending at the same point in time ranged between 84% and 86%, so our spending is slightly below that of the previous years. Page four, we have a graph that presents revenue. On one graph at the top, with spending on the lower graph. This represents the monthly revenue and spending for the current and two previous years. The trend is in the green background, and our revenue collections are slightly above trend. There's more information on the financial report, starting on page five, more details. On pages 17 and 18, we had five budget transfers that exceeded $50,000 during May. The first was to transfer $1.14 million that was budgeted for special education wages. This was transferred to contract services to address contracted costs of occupational, physical, and speech therapy. The transfers were largely the result of a large number of vacancies. The second entry transferred money between several operating accounts in curriculum and instruction to the instructional supplies for summer school. A third entry transferred reserve funds to transportation services to pay for increased costs for contracted services under the McKinney-Vento Act. This is for children that have been displaced. The fourth entry is on page 18. This transfers funds between several special education accounts. And the last entry was transferring funds from several school facility accounts. Chairwoman Martin, that concludes my comments for May. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Any questions? And then Ms. Basine.
Good evening.
Hi.
Just want to send you out with a bang. No, seriously, thank you for...
Little flag you threw.
Thank you for all of your support to our division and the work that you've done. So just want you to know, it is appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
Just wanted to get clarity. The unexpendable balance that 19, was it 19 million? Is that correct? I thought I saw.
Can you refer to which page?
Scrolling back up, let's see. Yeah, on page five, it says revenue in excess of expenditures and encumbrances, actual year-to-date, 19,305. Is that what is current as of that?
Right. At May 31st, our revenue did exceed our expenditures in the general fund by 19.3 million. And there's, at this point, we have a, I guess, excess funds of more than this amount is projected. There have been a lot of vacancies, and we're projecting over 20 million in savings primarily related to vacancies.
So...
It's at a rate similar to the previous two years.
Yes, this will be about the third year in a row that we'll have about $20 million in excess. Can you... Pardon me?
You asking how it's going to be reallocated?
No, I would like for the board to talk about getting it reallocated earlier than what we do.
Okay.
But I really wanted to just... Let's see. In my prior years with the board, one of the things that we always heard was that we shouldn't have a goal to carry these large fund balances. And as we'll talk about a little bit in the budget, as you mentioned, a lot of this is associated with vacancies. And so I know that, you know, we've had conversations about our budgeting process and how we can budget in ways that support the classroom and support the academic needs. So just any parting thoughts on what you've seen around these $20 million in excess, and to what extent you think this trend may continue? Yeah, I don't know if the pandemic money is impacting what we're spending, if it's, I know it's vacancies, but do you see this trend adjusting over the next one to three years? Or do you see us really needing to have some conversations around rightsizing so that we don't carry these large fund balances forward?
This is very difficult. We have been using procedures for budgeting that have been familiar with me and that I have used throughout my career. And typically, pre-pandemic, we did not see surpluses of this size. I can say, my previous employer, we saw, we typically ran surplus, our absences of around 10%. With the, we, the last check, I think I'd said just previously, we were around 13% of our budgeted positions were vacant. So we're just a bit above where we was, where we were with my previous employer. I would say that in there, we probably, we included probably a larger allowance for vacancies than we have. We have been very careful. I would say, going into next fiscal year for '24, there's a larger vacancy savings than we had budgeted in this year. I'm concerned that this is going to continue for some time because the literature that we've seen indicates there are more teachers exiting the profession than entering. Most of our positions are in the teacher, are in the teacher area. So it's been increasingly difficult to recruit teachers and to keep teachers on staff. But our practice has been to budget for the authorized positions. We knew going into this coming year that we would have some vacancies, and I believe the vacancy rate that we embedded in our budget was about 6%, which is a bit more than we had in the previous years. So if vacancies continue at the rate that they are now, there would be a surplus. And it becomes even more difficult because we are not able to get substitute teachers. So we have teachers out, and we are having difficulty getting subs. So we have been budgeting for both of these, and we would love, I think, Dr. Bertson, I can say, we would be happy to fill all the open positions and to have subs in every rooms that needed them. I think that's our goal. It has just been very difficult. I don't see, I don't see it changing terribly in the coming years.
And I'll speak to that, appreciate that. I'll speak to that more when we get to the budget piece. And then with the budget transfers, again, I was trying to get a sense of, do you have any idea what the total number, amount of budget transfers we've done year-to-date from classroom instruction to non-classroom instruction?
Well, actually, if you turn to page seven of the budget, of the budget report, you can see in classroom instruction, our original appropriation was $145.4 million, and our revised budget is $144.4 million. So we actually increased that category very slightly.
I'm sorry, can you slow that for me for a second? What, you said on page?
Page seven.
And then you're at, oh, you're right at the top at 110?
Right, 110, classroom instruction. You see, our original appropriation of original budget was $144, $145.4 million, almost the exact same amount as the revised. So we very likely have moved money from, say, teacher and staff salaries to some other accounts. But the budget for classroom instruction changed practically nothing. If I just scan through here, you can see there's not huge changes within the class, within the functional or, these are actually programs that we're identifying here. They're not huge transfers. Most of the transfers are within the, those, the programs. So there's not, I don't see a lot transferring from one to another. In fact, the largest ones would be in operations and maintenance where we transferred some money from facility improvements. That's D-40 and D-66 towards the end of the schedule.
Okay, so when we see, maybe you've enlightened me even more. So in the column, we see revised budget, that's what's being used to track, in part, when we may transfer from one category to another, then that transfer change ends up showing in that revised budget column?
Right. And this is just, this report is by program.
Right.
If we go to another report, say, page 13, this is a, this is a report of the same information, but this is by object or type of expense. So for instance, you can see we've, our salaries and wages dropped from $231 million in our original budget to $229.5 million. So we did pull about $2.5 million out of salaries and wages, and that migrated into other accounts. So within programs, the budget's not changing so much, but we are moving money, we have moved money between specific accounts within the same program.
And then my last question is, and maybe someone on the policy committee can speak to it. Do we have in the policy committee, looking at the level of, the amount of budget transfers that are made without board approval? Because right now, we do transfers, and then we get the report, and the transfer is done. We had some conversations around looking at whether or not we should have a policy that may cap at a certain amount. Is that being, is that on the agenda somewhere that's being discussed?
No, we haven't.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Mr. Jordan, this may help somewhat, maybe, maybe not. Mr. Jenkins, can you explain potential impact on grants closing out within the next couple of years, and if you think that will have a significant impact on our carry-forward funds?
Well, the primary grants that I think you're referring to are those that are related to the pandemic. We received, let's see, there were, there were three primary grants. The first one was around 12 million, the second one was about 50, and the third one was 113 million. The second round, the $50 million one, will run out this coming September. I think we have obligated most of those funds and are working diligently to spend them. The third round will terminate at the end, September of 2024. We have been using a lot of those funds for, I guess, special services for students. When I say special, I should say auxiliary or additional services, tutoring services, summer school. And we've been, I guess, dealing with learning loss, and probably Dr. Poll, he's much closer to this than I am. But I know loss of learning, social and emotional well-being, we've spent significant funds on responding to the pandemic, especially in the early years. So a lot of sanitation, cleaning, all kinds of things. And we have a sizable investment in improving the heating and cooling systems throughout the district. As we move past September of, excuse, yeah, September of 2025, those funds wouldn't be available. I would say that one of the strategies we have used is to fund the summer school programs out of the pandemic relief funds over the last several years. We still budgeted money in our general fund budget for summer school, but by and large, the costs were charged to the grants because the funds were there. So for summer, the summer programs, we will certainly be able to continue the basic ed program, or the base, I'm not sure, I can't remember what we call it, but the...
Summer innovation.
Correct.
And summer stars.
But the programs that we've...
Basic skills.
That we have historically funded through tuition basis, those are going to be problematic to continue free. So the Einstein program, some of the, I guess, the more advanced courses are the ones that weren't related to remedial or intervention. Those generally were funded with tuition, and I think that also included the high school credit courses. So that's, that's an impact that would be direct during the summer.
And just to that point, you know, I'm supportive of some of the recommendations that we've dealt with that has used resources to support tutoring and, I don't know if you call them auxiliary or enhancement services. And I think, Ms. Basine, I think one of the reasons we've talked about having a deeper conversation around the pandemic funding grants is so we know what we are supporting that may need to be a part of our overall programmatic efforts to support student outcomes and, you know, and what's not. I just think that in light of the balances that we are carrying over and the conversations that we need to have about, you know, what our students need, what our students' needs are, and, you know, we talked about aid planning, all these things, we need to talk about it so that as part of this rightsizing, at least from my perspective, how do we support the needs operationally and continually, and not find ourselves trying to depend upon, you know, excess funds due to vacancies? Because we could find in some cases that we need more tutoring services because the students who need the daily instruction the most from highly qualified teachers are the schools that are being disproportionately dealing with absentees and vacancies. So I want to try to plug it up front and get the students the supports that they need as part of our overarching program. And then when we have opportunities for excess funds, we can support them, whether it's summer programming and so on. But I'll speak to that more with the budget piece. That's one of the reasons why, you know, I will state again my concern of us programming, planning for excess funds for $3 million a year for capital, when we know that we have needs that we're going to have to meet in terms of academic needs of students and our competitive compensation goals as part of the strategic plan. So thank you. Those are the questions I had.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, well, Dr. Martin, so I had questions, and some have, some of them have been answered through your responses to Mr. Jordan's questions. But I do want to talk or ask a couple of questions to piggyback on some of what you said. So I'm going to start with the transfers related to the instructional supplies for summer school. So based on what you just shared, if you can help me understand this, so we budgeted for summer school through our general fund balance, in part. But most of the funds for summer school are coming for, and I'm talking about for all of the programs. I know we have basic skills, and we have others that are called innovative summer school sessions and all of that. But are we right now funding the entire MPS summer school programs with our SIR funds? Even though I know we have budgeted in the general fund balance, but have we?
The lion's share is yes.
Yes.
But the transfer that you saw was to transfer funds within the general fund. So that would be the school's operating fund to summer school accounts so they could make purchases. That was for very specific purchases, and it was supplies. But if you were to look on page 10 of the financial report, you can see that in the summer school budget, we, our budget was originally $1,121. We've spent $81,000 to date, so we spent a very small fraction of that because much of the summer school program was funded through the pandemic relief funds.
Okay. And it sounds like there's still money there in... Okay, and it sounds like there's still money there in the pandemic relief funds.
There is, there's money. Airplan is to fund this, this coming summer and next summer.
And next summer. I guess my question around that was why the transfer to support instructional, so why the, why the transfer from our general?
Why was it necessary?
What's that?
Why was it necessary?
Why was it necessary, and could those funds be used for something else that we are not, related to classroom instruction that we are not currently using?
Okay, some of it is, some of it's sort of the way we have our, our system organized and how we operate in silos, I guess. The department that was ordering materials was able to identify savings within their budget and could transfer that to the summer school account so that they could order summer school supplies. So it, overall, there was money in the summer school account, but it wasn't within the office, the office that had, that needed to spend the money. They need, they were able to identify funds that they were not going to spend elsewhere and use them for summer school.
Okay, well, you, you said something really interesting, and if I heard you correctly, that I think that as a board and maybe as a governance team, that we should talk about and see if this enhances our efficiency, but, you know, you talk about operating in silos and just really looking at our needs and, and how we might budget perhaps more strategically, or, you know, I get, I, I don't know, I'm not the expert to, to kind of really understand how that, how that works, but.
I would say in this case, the department needed funds for summer school, and they were able to identify funds in their budget, so I see nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, and, and I'm not suggesting there is. I'm just talking about on the front end, as Mr. Jordan said, like, how do we on the front end predict what the needs are, even, you know, my, my next question was going to be around the, the budget transfers related to special education, for instance. And I see, you know, P T, O T, speech therapy, those are all services that we are now, you know, that we're using funds for to support those services. So, and looking at the special education, just as you were showing for Mr., Mr. Jordan's question, so on page ten, if I'm not mistaken, it looked like, I'm scrolling back up.
Page nine, I believe.
Oh, is it page, page nine? Okay. Yep, correct. No, I don't, whoa, wait, let me see. Anyway, my, my question is, you know, how do we on the front end, if we know that those needs are, are necessary for our students to be successful?
I would say that we did budget for those needs. We, we budgeted to hire therapists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, and speech therapists. Unfortunately, we, some of those positions are vacant, and Dr. Waters needed, Walter, excuse me, Dr., we needed staff in there, and the only way we could do that is to go outside to a contractor.
To contract, okay.
It's, it's not that we didn't budget, we did in fact budget for those services, but our hope was that we would be able to staff them internally because it just, we're able to serve more, more students if we have internal staff than we would if we went out to outside services, plus they're, they're more expensive.
Okay, I, I understand, okay, that, that makes sense, to contract those services out to other entities to fulfill that, that need. And do you feel that we're fulfilling the need with, with that, through, through that, I guess, through that strategy?
I trust that Dr. Walter makes sure that we're in compliance, so I would have to answer yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, well, my, let me see.
And over the years, it hasn't been uncommon for us to have to make those transfers based on staffing. This isn't a, a new issue, it's been issue, an issue for years and years and years. We definitely want to hire people in those positions. Unfortunately, they're, they're few and far between, and we certainly want to meet the I E P needs of our students, and therefore we contract services.
Sure, absolutely, and that's, that's, I guess, the, the question is, are we not, do we not have their resources to be able to contract? It's, I guess I'm thinking more from, from a student needs assessment standpoint of what the, what the, what the needs are from the, on the front end. Anyway, I, I think, I think you've answered my question.
We need contracted employees.
Yes, yes, and, and I think we may need it in other areas too, so I think that's, that's kind of why I'm, I'm asking that question, like, how, and, and by fulfilling that need, asking about are we fulfilling that need, I'm asking, like, is that a potential strategy that we need to look more strongly at, especially in other areas where we know, you know, our, our vacancy rate is higher for a need that is critical to the success of a group of students, you know, a specific subgroup or what have you? So that's, that was the basis for my question there, but you've answered my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Can I get a motion to adopt the monthly financial report?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the monthly financial report, subject audit.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clinton. Ms. Buffalo?
Basine?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye. Okay, up next we have the superintendent's designee for school year twenty-four.
No, we're on budget.
Oh, I skipped ahead, sorry. I skipped ahead, okay. Adoption of the school board's fiscal year twenty-two four operating budget. Can I get a motion to accept the budget?
I think we have a presentation.
Or we can adopt those.
That'd be a great gift.
Sorry, I know.
Before you jump right to it. Let's see, I thought maybe you might want to know what we were recommending. So, just kind of historical, I guess, Dr. Bertsong presented a budget to you in February, February first, if I remember correctly. You adopted a budget mid, late March. That budget was sent over to the city man, city manager's office to be considered by the city council. Council adopted its budget, I believe it was just last week, there were some glitches, as you might recall, with some advertising, so it adopted late. I also want to kind of remind you that the General Assembly made history, I suppose, and I think the year is going to end before they actually adopt a budget. They, they passed something they called the skinny budget, and they addressed a couple of issues, but they didn't really act on most of the governor's recommendations, and there was a stalemate between the, the two houses. So what I'm bringing to you this, tonight are recommended amendments to the fiscal twenty-four budget based on actions by the city council and what has emerged as the current final budget or the current budget at the state level. So for fiscal twenty-four, we are recommending changes, or we have changes in the funding that's available to us. There is a reduction in funding from the Commonwealth of six million, eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. You'll recall something called the calculation tool era, that was about four and a half million or so, and this, we spoke to you in March, and we learned of this, this issue, and we made some recommendations for addressing it, so we'll talk some more about that. So that's the bad news. On the brighter front, the funding from the city, City of Norfolk is three and a quarter million more than they had estimated back in, I think it was in December, so that, that's really good news. And we had recommended using the textbook fund money that is in their fund balance or in the textbook fund balance to address the calculation error, so that, that adds one point two eight million dollars to available funds. So our net resources, our net money available in the general fund is two point three three million less than is in the, the budget Dr. Bertsong presented to you in February. These are the recommended spending reductions. Most of these were reviewed with you in March, related to the calculation error. There has been some adjustment because the numbers changed. We recommended reducing the number of school bus drivers. I believe it was from around a hundred and ninety to a hundred and sixty, I believe it's about thirty drivers. We weren't budgeting, we weren't budgeting vacancies in the transportation section at a hundred percent, it was more, it was closer to fifty percent, so the reduction looks fairly small for thirty positions, and that would be the reason. We had proposed, or recommended to you, funding a time and attendance system for air payroll to collect the time, information about when people work and when they were off, so to improve their efficiencies there and also make sure errors don't happen or reduce errors. That was a four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar estimate. We recommended then and now to move that to the capital budget since that is a one-time investment of, that's a one-time investment. Deferred maintenance, this, this item was a larger amount, I've cut it back now since the reduction is smaller, but we would reduce the amount that we have budgeted for capital improvements within the general fund by just under three hundred and five thousand. Unemployment insurance, there was more budgeted than we need, so a hundred and fifty thousand. Vehicle fuel, this one was not provided before. We've, I've looked at the fuel accounts, the current budget and what we've spent, and we, I think I'm comfortable recommending a reduction in the fuel budget. And then the increase in the city's revenue increased the real estate taxes that are related to the two cent allocation to schools for capital. So our debt service goes up seventy-six point six, seventy-six thousand six, try again, seventy-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. Those funds are retained by the city to pay debt service, but it's, it comes out of the two cent that's reserved for school capital, which again, the, the city will retain. So our general fund budget revenue side, you can see the Commonwealth funding was originally budgeted at two hundred and thirty-nine point six million. The revisions at the state level, six million, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand down, so the revised budget, two hundred and thirty-two point seven million. City of Norfolk is positive again, going from a hundred and fifty-two point three eight seven, up by three point two seven million to a hundred and fifty-five point six. No change in federal assistance or other local funds, so our total budget goes down, our revenue goes down from four hundred and one million to three hundred and ninety-seven thousand. Utilizing the textbook fund adds one million, two hundred and eighty thousand to available funds, so our budget, net reduction, two million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, ending up with, at three hundred and ninety-eight point nine seven million dollars. That is the revenue side. The spending side, you see pretty much the same thing. Our original budget was four hundred and one point three million, reducing the expenditures by two million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, as stated on the third graph, the third chart, leaves us three hundred and ninety-eight point nine seven million. Most of the, the biggest changes were in pupil transportation, where we reduced the number of positions and also the allowance for fuel. The technology adjustment is the, the software for the time and attendance system. Looking across all funds, you see no changes in school nutrition, grants, or capital improvements. Our total budget goes from, originally proposed at four hundred and ninety-four point eight million, now four ninety-two point four seven million. And that concludes my comments. If there are any questions, I would be happy, yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Campson.
Thank you. It certainly seems like we had a lot of reductions in a time that we're shorthand, the short funded, and it seems like most of them are coming from the state.
The biggest reductions are from, in fact, the state funding.
Because it seems like the city council is giving us a little extra, and it looks like the feds are at least maintaining, but we seem to be not being very supported by our state. Would that be correct?
Recall that much of this, two-thirds of it, is in the calc tool era, so the funds really weren't there.
And that era happened in the state department, didn't it? It didn't happen with us.
It was, we relied, we really rely on those calc tools. They, this is the first year they have had anything near the mistake that we had this, this year.
And so we, and so we, we absorbed that era, not them, that it fell on us, their mistake fell on us. Is that accurate?
It put us where we would have been had, had, had the era not occurred, we would have had to have dealt with that earlier. We simply didn't realize that we had a, had a problem. And Ms. Campson, I would also say that I don't believe the state budget is finished. I, I believe that the General Assembly will do something in the coming weeks or months to, to come, to come closer to what Governor Yonkin had recommended. The stalemate seems to be over the size or, or even whether or not there will be a tax reduction. The two houses are really at opposite poles as to the tax reduction that was recommended. But it appears that the Assembly will come back, so I don't think this is the end of the budget amendments, but we do need for you to adopt something for the start of the year.
Because it's not a good, a good way for goodness. Did I catch it from you? I did have a clear voice when I came here. It, it's just that I, it seems like we, when we look at budgets year after year, all the reductions or, or this grabbing back seem to happen at the state level. Would that be accurate?
Well, I don't have the numbers.
Running for election in November, maybe this is the light we need to, you know.
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I believe if we looked at the amount of money that the state put in their budget for last year, for fiscal twenty-three, I think the twenty-four is going to be just a little larger. It's not as large as we thought it was going to be because there was a big mistake in the calculation.
At a time when we have a lot of shortages in our finances because of the cost of everything we're doing, whether it's gas in our cars or new window panes in our schools, the price is higher and higher. Putting a roof on a building has really, the jump in size of that is, is just unbelievable, and yet the state of Virginia is continuing to cut the amount of money they give us. Would that be accurate?
They're down a couple of million, definitely, because they did fund, they did fund a proposed bonus, which is in our budget, and they also funded some math specialists, which we have already, I mean, we had, they were already in place. Those did not pass the skinny budget.
If we already have those math specialists in place and, and the state's grabbing back money, do we lose those positions?
No, no. We, we were funding them before the state proposed making, making funds, or providing state funds for them.
Because that's certainly something that we need as we try and catch up our children from the pandemic. We don't need to be pulling out the specialists that are in there to help.
But again, but I really think there will be around two of the budget sometime in the summer.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Clinton?
Thank you. Just quickly, I, I noticed that you said there would be a reduction in deferred maintenance, and I know we got that round number of about three hundred and four thousand dollars. I don't know if that's your Mr. Jenkins or Mr. Fraley. Can you kind of elaborate what that looks like?
Well, it's just in the general fund, and I will say that if you look at our budget transfers this year, a lot of what we budgeted for facility improvements actually went into repairs and maintenance. So this is one of the more painful pieces of the reductions, but it, it is, it's relatively small. We, we minimized it, but it's, it's the, it's probably the worst one we have here.
And so kind of looking at that, I know we have to have a balanced budget going in, but I think Mr. Jordan had highlighted earlier that there's about, what, almost twenty million in funding potentially that we'll be able to pull back?
Well, that won't be available to you for a while, but I think we can also see on this slide, capital improvement budget, there's twenty-six point eight million, or twenty-six point nine million dollars in capital funds. Some of that is, it is not slated for specific projects, but to address, I guess, emerging issues and also increase inflation, in effect, increasing costs.
Okay.
So we do have a sizable amount in the capital improvement budget for. So, we do have a sizable amount in the capital improvement budget for this year.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else, Ms. Bassin?
So, if I could build on, on that comment, so are you, are you suggesting that funds from that capital improvement budget could be used to close the gap of, in the defer, of that three hundred thousand?
What I'm saying is, we had budgeted for capital improvements in the operating fund, and we also have capital improvements in the capital improvement fund. So, things that we had planned out of the operating could be shifted.
Could be shifted, okay.
To capital. Yeah, I mean, that's possible. My bigger concern is, a large portion of what we budgeted for capital improvements was actually for routine maintenance. It gets transferred, and you've seen transfers. In fact, there's one in, in the month of May for that very purpose.
Okay. All right. And if I could ask a couple, so the increase in city funding that we're receiving, that's as a result of the?
Improved economy, the improved...
Yeah, the funding, yeah, the revenue sharing.
Real estate, it's a revenue sharing formula, yes.
Right, right. Okay, just clarifying that. And then, you talked about the number of FTEs that could potentially be, or the number of bus drivers that could be impacted by that reduction. Are they bus drivers that we already have positions filled for?
Yeah.
Or, okay, no.
Yeah, we, we had about a hundred and ninety positions budgeted.
Right.
I think we have somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and twenty positions, a hundred and fifteen maybe. And this would, but the, the authorized staff, I believe it's a hundred and sixty, which is significantly more than we have, we have staffed.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that. And I guess, to piggyback on something Ms. Campson said, you know, I didn't, I didn't vote in support of the budget back in March, because, like I, like I said then, is, I want us, and I wish the state understood how much more that we need to do to, to give our teachers higher salaries, to put more resources into improving academic outcomes, and, and in other areas related to student and staff well-being. And while there's progress being made at the state level, with some of that, it's not enough, and therefore, our budget is not enough. And so, I'm, I'm still not going to vote in support of, of this budget for that reason. But, I appreciate all the work that you and your team have, have done to bring forward the budget and the revisions that you have. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You know?
Dr. Martin?
Yeah, I just, I guess to, to Ms. Bassin's last point, going back to conversations
we were having with the monthly financial report, so I find myself increasingly in a challenged position when we're advocating to the state that we need more, while at the same time, ending up with twenty million dollars a year in, in unexpendited funds. So, that's what I was saying earlier. I think we need to, going into this next budget cycle, as soon as we can, start the process, and really look at our resource needs, as well as whatever this conversation is going on around our facility consolidation, whatever it is. We, we need to be clear on what we're trying to achieve, and with students being at the center of it, not, not buildings. If we end up with smaller class sizes that produce better student outcomes, then my position would be, so be it. But, if we can't, if we aren't demonstrating improved student outcomes, and we have excess capacity in buildings, then I think that's when we have a challenge for what we present to the public of how we're using its resources. Going back to the comment that was made about the potential for having large fund balances over the next few years, I just want to revisit my thoughts around our compensation plan. We have, when we, when we have conversations about we're budgeting for a hundred and sixty bus drivers, we don't fill the positions, then we make reductions. It sounds like widgets, but at the end of the widget, I'm assuming, until I hear otherwise, then there's stress that goes on the bus drivers who are then doubling up, tripling up, doing what they have to do on the routes to meet the needs of students, and getting them there in a safe and sound manner. So, I think it's important for us to really talk about the human impact of these reductions in positions that go on field on, on, on our students. And I like to, for us moving forward to have a better conversation around that, because I think it's too easy to just talk about positions. There's, in theory, if we have vacancies that we aren't filling, that means the expert needs that we determine that we have in order to deliver the high-quality education that we say we want to deliver is at risk, and that we're either potentially stressing the folks that we do have, or perhaps undelivering what we would like to. I'm not saying that what we deliver is not high-quality, because it is, but we know it comes with a stress and a cost as a result of the vacancies. But, as we've talked about the compensation and the, and the steps, so, we've had three years of twenty million dollars in excess. We may have another three years at twenty million dollars in excess. If the board is willing to, you know, take some of this action, we are, in essence, we wouldn't have twenty million dollars. It might be fifteen million dollars. It might be something less than that, because we would have invested in our staff for those who are working with us to take on the added responsibility as a result of the vacancies that, that we have. And so, I know when we have the conversation, when we get to it around one-time funds, then it says how it's feasibly, feasibly, fiscally irresponsible for us to use one-time funds in that way. But, I still have the position that the one-time funds are that great, because we aren't doing the investment upfront in our human infrastructure. And if we made those investments, we clearly, at least based upon the patterns that we own, have the resources to do those things, so that, at least for those who are employed with us, we can keep them supported. And then, maybe we would face another challenge down the line, if we find that our compensation plan then is causing our vacancy rate to, to decrease. Along with that, I assume in this budget then, I think it's in this budget, just remind me, the, the three million dollars that the city manager asked the school system to devote to capital improvement based upon our trend around unexpendited funds, is that in this budget? Is that three million dollars in that budget?
Actually, it's not in there for this year. There was three million in last year's, or fiscal twenty-three's budget. And I think there will be probably a double amount, maybe six million in there for the year that Maury starts, but there's not a, there's not a school project in fiscal twenty-four's budget.
So, do you have any more clarity around this discussion that it appeared to me that city council was having about funding being withheld because of the school board's failure to act on some consolidation recommendations? We got one recommendation back in March from our, you know, consultants. But, is there any more clarity that we have around what city council is talking about in terms of the board's failure to act on recommendations when it comes to consolidation?
Sir, I, I don't watch every one of their meetings, but I not, we've not, I've not received any information from the city staff about that.
So, I, I want to echo Ms. Bassin. I'm glad of the work that's being done, but I'm, I'm even more adamant now that we should be taking the opportunity to invest in our existing employees, and getting them on, moving towards one step, one year. And, so I'm not going to support the budget in part because of that, and because I think we need to invest more in the, in the classroom. But, I would like to, beginning next month, for us to start having those conversations around what it is we need to do for this upcoming budget, and not wait till February, March, and, and having to try to deal with these conversations then. I think we have an opportunity to, with the strategic plan, to really refocus our student outcome focus budgeting. So, thank you. Thank you for all the, the work that you've done, and your team.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you. Now, can I get a, a motion to adopt the financial report? I'm sorry, the budget.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the school board's fiscal twenty-twenty-four operating budget.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Ms. Tuna, go ahead, please call the question.
Bassin?
Nay.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Martin?
Aye. So, the, the budget revision has passed. Thank you, everyone. Do you have a second? Go ahead, yeah.
I'd, I'd like to make a brief statement. I want to congratulate Mr. Jenkins on his retirement.
Steve, it has been absolutely just wonderful working with you. You have been the, the calm force on our chief's team, especially during meetings. I know a lot of us have confided in you over the years about personal things, as well as professional things. We're truly going to miss you. I mean, I cannot express to you in words how much we're going to miss you. You've done great things for the children of Norfolk Public Schools. There's not ever a conversation that we have where you don't talk about children and teachers, and for that, I will always be grateful for that. Thank you for keeping us centered. Thank you for your wisdom, and all that you've done to pull us together as a team, and, and keep us calm, and focused on, on the right things for children. And so, we're going to really, really miss you, really and truly, truly miss you. And we celebrate you, and we hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you very much. This has really been my pleasure. It's been a great honor, and I appreciate it.
Okay. Up next, we have the five-point-zero-three superintendent's designate for school year twenty-twenty-four.
Dr. Martin, Vice Chair Buffalo, members of the board, for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year, I would like to recommend that Dr. Mike Cataldo and Dr. James Poole serve as my designees.
Good, thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the recommendation?
Madam Chair, move that we accept the superintendent's recommendations for her superintendent's designees for school year twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Can I get a second?
Second.
Was it Buffalo or Campson?
Buffalo.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Tuna.
Okay. Bassin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay. That passes. Congratulations, Mr. Cataldo and Dr. Poole.
Dr. Cataldo.
Or, Dr. Cataldo, I'm sorry, Dr. Cataldo. Okay, up next, we have a vote on our citizens' comment policies. And it is, on the, the vote is to...
A move to the decision discussion agenda?
Yeah, we moved it to decision discussion. Is to recall the supplemental budget, or, sorry, supplemental policy on, on dividing public comment into agenda, non-agenda items. And by, if, if, if we recall this, then it would go back to a single agenda and non-agenda public comment. So, just so everyone's clear on that. Can I get a?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I actually move to postpone this item to our next business meeting, the citizen comments and agenda, non-agenda items. And they asked us that all board members be present, and that board members can continue to have individual conversation to move to an agreement.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. It's open for discussion.
Again, Madam Chair's making the motion. I've had individual conversations with some board members, again, because this is a policy item, a procedural item for the board as a whole. One, as the parliamentarian would say, that all board members, which Robert Woods would say should be here to make that decision, and to make sure that everyone's there. But, I am listening. I am working with colleagues to try to move to find some positions that would be better. But, again, as I've stated in this one, it has never been about me, or never been about taking away people's ability to speak, but doing things decent in order to ensure the efficiency and effectiveness of our business meetings, so that we can take care of the business for which we are here to do, but also providing an opportunity for members of the community to speak. So, I would encourage, and my colleagues allow that a little bit of time, so that we can be able to get to that moment in July, and allow Dr. Gabriel to also be here and be a part of that conversation.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the request. I don't know at this point what our meeting schedule is going to be in July, so I don't know if we will, when we will know that we will have all board members here. I think we have, I feel like we've talked about comments to the board more than probably any other policy that we've had. And, and so, I think that at the work session, we got a sense of where Dr. Gabriel's view on it is. My, my suggestion is, is that we just go ahead and take action on it. We still, I think, as we've talked about, need to come back and look at if we want to make further adjustments around, you know, prioritizing student comments and some of the things that we've talked about. But, as the, you know, when we first did this, whatever, whatever the supplemental piece called, it just, it kind of came, at least for me, it kind of came as a surprise. I think we can just get back to where we were in having one comment period, and then go through a more, more of a whole discussion around any, any future adjustments, rather than postponing, then doing it, then coming back. I'd just like for us to, if we can, have whatever changes we like to make in place before the start of the school year, well, the, the students back, so that come early August, September, whenever our first meeting is after school opens, that we can have this clarity in place. And I think the sooner that we can make that determination, the, the better. At this point, if we do rescind it, we're only talking about a business meeting potentially in August, I mean, in July, a business meeting in, in August, and then hopefully, by the time we get to the August meeting, we would have made any additional...
additional modifications that we would agree to, to get us going as we move into September. So I would ask if, if you all would reconsider and just allow us to go ahead and take action on it tonight.
Any other comments? Okay. Ms. Tanner?
So we are voting on?
This is on, we're voting on the motion that I put forward to postpone first.
Okay, making sure.
Nay.
Nay.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Martin?
Nay. Okay, can I get a motion to, can I get a motion to recall supplemental policy KDZ, BDD, HC?
I move that we rescind the supplemental policy resulting in the board returning to one comment period on agenda and non-agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Can I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Bassin. Any comments or discussion? Okay. Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
Bassin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Nay.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay. That has passed. We will go back to, in July, we'll go back to one public comment opportunity at our business meetings. Okay. Next, we have citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Ms. Tanner?
Madam Chair, we have one speaker, Rakita Robinson.
Okay, great.
Good evening.
Wait till we get to the.
Hold on one second.
It's going to be short. You won't even need that.[1668.33][1668.36][laughter] It's going to be really short.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Martin, Vice Chair Buffalo, Superintendent and school board members and guests. My name is Rakita Robinson. I'm a first grade teacher at Richard Bowling Elementary School. My purpose for coming here tonight really was just to say thank you. We've had a crazy school year for me, but at the end of the school year, when teachers were given the opportunity to come to the office to sign for their contracts for next year, I remembered that you kept your word and that teachers that were hired before February 2014 received their three-step increase. And so I was here the last, this time last year, asking for that, and you did it. And so that was my purpose for coming tonight, was just to say thank you. Thank you for your integrity. Thank you for keeping your word. Thank you for supporting employees, bus drivers, custodians, we all see you, teachers, teacher assistants. So as I sat here, though, tonight, I didn't know, I called Ms. Tanner yesterday to try to figure out where to speak. There was no, she wanted to know if that was agenda or non-agenda, and I didn't know. I got here today and I had a complete panic, meltdown, like, I don't know what agenda item. So thank you for putting those agenda items back together. That makes a big impact with, with me as well. So again, thank you for the 2022-23 school year, and even more, thank you for the upcoming 2023-24 school year where I can invest more in my students and my classroom because you kept your word. So thank you.
And that concludes our speakers that are signed up by 7:00 P.M.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, with that, thank you all for a wonderful meeting, and I'll adjourn.